There we go. All right. Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum tonight. Rick, could you walk us through the agenda, please?
Certainly will. Good evening, everybody. We did have a work session earlier tonight, so that's the one meeting we've had prior to this regular board meeting. At that meeting, we received an construction update from both our construction management firm and our architects on how we're going to continue to move forward with our next generation Edina Public Schools, and there'll be action being taken later tonight on a variety of those topics. We also had a brief leadership update just to catch up as we continue to move into planning for the 2016-17 school year. As we move in tonight, the board will approve minutes. We'll be hearing from the audience. We have several audience members who want to address the board tonight. We have a consent agenda item that I'll talk about a little bit later. Those are, again, pretty straightforward items. Under the report item, we'll do a leadership update, again, just giving highlights of some of the things happening within the district. We have two guiding change documents. These are both problem-solving documents that help shape how we're going to move forward. The first is going to be around daily schedules as we look to the fall of 2017, what the daily schedule will be at an elementary level, middle school, and high school level. So it'll be framing up how we study that and gather data. There's some preliminary work already occurring. We're going to talk a little bit about the start and end times of the school day. Again, this would be for the fall of 2017. It's a document that'll help shape how that goes, and the board will approve that before we begin that study. We have some policies that we'll be looking at. And then under the action item, we'll be taking a look at office schematics as it relates to our construction, the elementary construction bids that we'll actually be rejecting. There's a high school construction bids we'll be moving on, the improvement, site improvement documents administration's recommending we move forward on that. We have a termination and non-renewal recommendation. This is an annual work that we do administratively, and that's a roll call vote for that, and both that and on the unrequested leave recommendations. We also have the general fund alignment plan that the board first learned of at the March meeting. We'll be taking action on that. We've got an update on our teacher evaluation plan. We've got some materials to purchase, both in the area of reading. We learned a lot about that at the last meeting, as well as our learning management system, which is going to be called Schoology. We identify the key board dates for 1617, and finally do some more policy review before we close out the meeting for tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is approving the minutes from the March 14th work session and the March 14th regular meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
So, second.
All right. Are there any changes or questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. The next item on the agenda is hearing from members of the audience. We do welcome input from the community before the school board. We do request several things. One, keep any of your presentations to three minutes. Second, try not to repeat what other people have said. I do notice, as I look through here, there are a number of people speaking, I think, on the same topic. Please comply with policy 206, which is board policy. Some aspects of that are not to discuss individual employees or individual school board members. Typically, we do not have a discussion at the time that presentations are made. I know that for one of these topics, there will be later discussion. And if you have additional comments, please feel free to share them with the board afterwards in writing. The first person is Ms. Hackett. She please come up and grab one of the microphones.
Just going to read.
Hello?
Have my three minutes started?
They'll start, yes, right now.
Okay. I am here to speak on behalf of the 408Change.org petitioners and countless other Edina community members who are concerned to hear of EPS's plans to replace four grass fields in our community with artificial turf with crumb rubber infill. If you choose to continue down this path, you would be committing this community to an influx of approximately 120,000 ground-up tires where our children play sports, tires that have been proven to contain multiple toxic chemicals. You would be making a financial commitment on behalf of EPS parents in the Edina community of millions of dollars. You would be spending our tax dollars on a substance that many parents will not allow their children to play on. There is simply not enough known about this substance in terms of its short and long-term effects on human health and the environment. The Consumer Product Safety Commission, which was the initial government agency that declared crumb rubber safe to play on, has now backtracked on its position. The Federal Research Action Plan on Recycled Tire Crumb Rubber Infill has promised the deliverable of its initial findings by the end of 2016. Don't you think you owe it to your community to wait until these findings come out? What would be the negative impact on EPS and this community if you waited eight months and in that time allowed your constituents to have a voice in this decision? At least with that scenario, you, the superintendent and school board, are not solely responsible for this crucial public health and environmental decision. In the opposite scenario, you ignore the voices of your community and move forward with artificial turf with crumb rubber. What is your contingency plan should information emerge from the federal study and others in the next year that crumb rubber is toxic to humans and the environment? Those millions of dollars will have been spent, wasted, and because you were made aware of the potential risks to this community when you made this decision, you open up EPS and yourselves to potential legal action. I think it is clear which scenario sounds more thoughtful, prudent, and fiscally responsible. I will ask you one more time. Do not approve the earthwork bids. Do not approve the purchase of artificial turf with crumb rubber material. Do not commit this community to 120,000 ground-up tires in our midst. Simply wait and keep the fields grass. We need more answers. We need you to listen to our voices. We love this community and this school district, and we are dedicated to keeping it safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hackett. There will be a discussion on this later, so I would invite you to stay throughout the board meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Next person is Ms. Flanagan.
Hello.
Please pick up one of the microphones.
Thank you for the time to address the board. I'd like to start by saying we've had children in the district since 2001. Since then, I personally have been part of groups of parents asking the school board for consideration on various things that have disappeared from the district. We ask that the extra pair not be removed from CP, gone. We ask that Spanish not be removed, gone. We ask that the media center clerks not be removed, gone. We ask that the zero-to-33-month program be given further consideration, gone. We ask that playworks be reconsidered, not, gone. Now I ask that you consider delaying accepting a bid on turf for athletic fields, fields that could prove harmful and costly to replace in the future. I ask that you consider using these dollars to improve security in our schools or utilize it for the elementary school construction. When you asked us for $10 million for technology, we said yes. When you asked for $125 million for improved security and to improve all of our aging structures, we said yes. All we hear is no. If you don't start listening to your voters, perhaps the next time you ask us for something, we will say no. Please reconsider your acceptance of this bid and table it until the EPA studies have been completed. It harms you in no way, but going forward could harm those we hold dearest. Are you prepared to be liable for even one issue? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Next person is Ms. Williams. Hello.
Thank you. Okay. In an attempt to raise awareness about the impending use of crumb rubber for the field updates, Clover Hackett and I began Safe Athletic Fields Edina and launched a group Facebook page and a Change.org petition six days ago. As of 6:30 PM tonight, over 400 people had signed the petition in favor of holding off on crumb rubber infill. The following comments are from the petition and submitted by Edina residents only. I hate this stuff. There were a few of these fields in Chicago. In the summer heat, the rubber gives off a terrible chemical smell. We know of several incidents where rubber crumbs have gotten into the eyes of kids and adults and had to be surgically removed, in one case causing permanent damage. I get the temptation to use these fields indoors, but the idea of replacing our outdoor natural grass fields just seemed crazy. I would hate for the district to spend money on something only to have to pull it out in the future like they've done in other cities. Let's do the research first. If there's even a question of the safety of this product for our children, the school board needs to do the responsible thing and halt its plans. And all you need to do is look online for story after story of the real potential threat this product has on our children and our environment. My teens do not want to risk field play, marching band, or any exposure to a potentially toxic outdoor field. There is no reason we can't pause on this until further investigation. Voices need to be heard and considered. This could be a costly mistake. Slow down on the process and listen to your constituents. I understand the shortage of field space and the desire to look for grass alternatives to meet demand. However, the need, immediate as it is, does not justify a rush to installation. I respectfully ask EPS to pause until the study findings are released. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next is Ms. Coulter. Hello?
Thank you so much. So I fully support Ms. Hackett's comments. I think she did a great job summarizing it, so I'll be pretty brief with my remarks. In addition to the potential health risks and issues that arise from the crumb rubber, I think there's also a huge financial risk for the board if we move forward with this decision right now. If the ongoing studies determine that there is a link between these fields and health risks, then the district really ensures a huge liability and huge risks on itself. The large additional cost that it's going to be incurred by having to remove all the field and then correct it is going to be a huge impact on the district. So I would ask you, just wait. There's nothing wrong with waiting a few more months to understand and really get that information so we can make fact-based decisions before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Ms. Malabuska Ray. Did I get that right? I was close.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity. Others have touched on this a bit, but I would like two questions answered specifically. How much money does it cost to remove crumb rubber fields, the ones that we are putting in specifically? And how much does it cost specifically in a dollar amount to redo fields in natural turf or an alternative that is safe should rubber crumb be deemed dangerous? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wery?
Thank you, students, for the opportunity to represent our community. Wasn't necessarily intending to speak today, but it's an important opportunity to help bring some light to some potential issues. I too am here to discuss the turf replacement. And first question, have we committed to a contract to, in fact, use crumb rubber? If not, let's answer that later if we can. My first question is, when you ran for this position, assuming you weren't appointed, I'm going to have to assume your ideal and purpose was to serve the community and help protect our assets, our resources, whether it's taxpayer dollars, various resources, our kids, you name it. I'm assuming that it had to be your purpose. My perspective in looking at this situation is, unfortunately, in law school, studying many institutional failures and decisions and making choices that were really based monetarily, whether it was to save money, to make money, it didn't really matter. And with strict liability, these issues become very serious. We've come a long way as a society, but I don't think we're above making mistakes and taking some time to make some very good decisions, whether it's today, but also to protect ourselves, our roles in this community, but not the least of which is our school district. So I'm hoping that you'll consider an alternative. Crumb rubber, to me, just seems like there's so many issues. Generally, the old expression, when there's smoke, there's fire. It could be true in this case. I don't think it's worth playing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wery. Next is Ms. Shaw.
Thank you for letting me voice an opinion also on the same topic. As a parent, staff member, and resident of Edina, I was frustrated and disappointed to see that the administration is moving forward with its recommendation to install crumb rubber fields as part of the facility's referendum. I understand that based on the position paper that the district is willing to reevaluate when more information becomes available, but based on recent experiences with the current administration, I feel that response is not enough and is being given to appease the masses without real compassion and consideration for our children and the environment surrounding our schools. In essence, they are asking you to allow them to decide what risk is acceptable to this community. When any safety concern is raised by local, state, federal, and international agencies, why are we even spending time justifying a position based primarily on cost and durability? No one questions those two things. Obviously, the tires are durable. That's why hundreds of thousands of them are still around. And they're obviously cheap because the supply is huge. But what's the rush? The answer right now is not to bury our heads in the sand and move forward with this project. The community has been told that countless other items from the Spring 2015 referendum plan are delayed, compromised, and changed. The position paper quotes, says, and I quote, "The growing demand for outdoor competition and practice fields in Edina limited the ability for the natural fields to 'rest' to restore the field for safe playing conditions." As a side note, maybe we should be talking more about our kids resting instead of the grass resting, but I digress there. Did you know that the average synthetic athletic field has about 40,000 tires in it, the same tires that our government deemed unfit for landfills? When making this recommendation, how can the district fail to recognize the families of over 200 young athletes with direct links to these materials who have been diagnosed with cancer, some having since died? They surely could not have read the Yale University study that found 12 known carcinogens and dozens of chemical irritants in each one of those small black dots our kids are covered in when they play on crumb rubber fields. While the studies that I'm guessing the district is basing their decision on may say these materials are safe, what they're failing to recognize is that our kids will not be exposed to just one of these chemicals. They will be exposed to all of them simultaneously. And I think that if you ask any high school chemistry teacher, they would agree that this most likely enhances the toxicity. So to say that they are okay with this product based on the safety of each individual chemical is truly false logic. Listen, do I think we have all the answers today? No. Does anybody have all the answers today? No. But any organization with the responsibility of the safety of young and developing minds should take pause until more information can be provided. That means putting this project on hold, directing precious resources to those items that deliver a more direct impact on my child's learning. I compel you to vote against the recommendation for now. The risks are too great. The financial risk alone of spending this money now only to have to replace these fields in the near future is huge and irresponsible. It only takes a few minutes and access to Google to see that not just in the U.S., but across the globe, professional athletic organizations, school districts, and governments are putting projects on hold and opting against these products. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Correa.
So lately, I've been reflecting kind of deeply on Ken Dragseth's key guiding question for all involved in decision-making. Is it good for kids? When I moved here in 2012, I described Edina Public Schools like this: progressive, holistic, well-thought-out, intentional, and most definitely, good for kids. First in the nation for high school late start, middle school block scheduling, flex groups, differentiation, music and PE twice a week, free play recess, comprehensive birth to grade to age-three programs. Yes, good for kids. Please listen to our teachers, our students, and our parents before you whittle away everything that makes this school district unique. Bring it back to the simplicity of Ken's question. Is it good for kids?
Thank you very much. The next person is Ms. Pelé.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Pelé. Okay. And I have two kids in GT, and we came over here from the DA program and elements program. And we came over here specifically for the Edina program. And we were not alone. There was three other kids, or two other kids that were in the DA, and one other kid that dropped out sooner that also came over here. And the reason why we chose this program was because the math wasn't hard enough and the reading wasn't hard enough. And this way, being in a classroom that they were in, it was spread between 95th percentile and 99th percentile, and there was still a range because there was also kids in there who had high IQs but did not have the math or the reading skills. So what we found here is that our reading has really, the reading curriculum here has gone, is by far harder, and so is the math is finally at her level. I just came from the meeting downstairs, and things that were said that I find very upsetting is that, please ask, give us permission to experiment and explore. I asked to find out what the reading scores were, and are we really growing four points in our current program, and are we really growing 10 points in our current math program? And two years ago, when I came here, the answer was yes. I just asked again for that information, and hopefully I will receive it soon. But I think one of the great things about this school and this system is that we, you don't have to be good at both. You can be good at one and still get the services and still be challenged. And we have specific GT teachers who are trained for GT learners. And if we move them back into the classroom, like the Baltimore schools, we'll be losing a lot of kids. Bloomington, right now, has the problem that their 99th percentile children are regressing to the mean. And when that came out, a lot of people left. And I really hope that you consider keeping the GT teachers and specially-trained teachers and administrators for our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I want to reiterate, for those who have spoken about the crumb rubber, that it will be a topic within the leadership, and it'll be a topic later on in the meeting, so I would encourage you to stay. Thank you, everybody, for speaking. We do appreciate it. The consent agenda is next. Are there any requests to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Next are reports and discussion. First is leadership update. Rick?
Okay. Wait for it to pop up here. Again, this helps frame how we're doing our work going forward as a school district. Lots happening in the district as we continue to wrap up this school year, and we thank the teachers and the students and the parent community as we continue to get geared up on a lot of assessment work being done and hopefully a lot of excitement. But we're also having one eye focused on the future as we take a look at next-gen construction. We are moving forward on a variety of areas here as it's starting to get active. We hope, again, to close on our land purchase before the end of the month. That would allow us to continue to move forward with the district's plans to have a new transportation facility. That would also put our current facility for sale. So that's all in moving forward. Later tonight, we'll be talking about rebidding the elementary construction project. Again, we're wanting to make sure this project remains whole, so we're taking a look at rebidding that, rethinking the schedule, rethinking the scope, and rethinking the spending, not only of the elementaries but all of our projects, because we want to make sure that we reach the scope and the commitment that we had in the review and comment document that was approved and that we shared with the community in May. Construction bids for the high school are very favorable, so we'll learn more about that. The east turf fields, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second, but we are bringing a recommendation forward to the board tonight to prepare the soil for improving our campus, here on the east campus, for some additional fields. We're still sorting out the new furniture selection. We have plans around that, and we're going to ask our design teams to take a look at that at the elementary level. But again, wanting to make sure that that furniture is adaptive and flexible to meet the needs of our students as we continue to look forward to the future. Communication updates. We're going to continue to keep the community posted on how we're rolling forward with our communications, especially as it relates to construction. And once the construction begins, we'll actually try to keep a weekly update going so that people are aware of how things are rolling forward with our construction. So when we look at our next-gen construction, again, it's scope, schedule, spending. That's how it's going to be a success. We've known that from day one, and we're going to continue to work on that. We've had some very, and over half of our, tonight, the board will approve the construction bids at the high school. That's over half of the total package, so we now know where those dollars sit. We now know where we need to adjust some scope a little bit around our various projects, and then take a look at how we need to possibly modify the scheduling to make sure we have a successful project when we're looking at 11 different sites. Now, taking a focus on the athletic fields as it relates to the synthetic turf. The district has done a lot of discussion on this dating back to 2003, when we first decided to go into looking at synthetic turf, and that was in the referendum of 2003. There was the football field, as well as a field up at the high school that installed synthetic turf, which had a crumb rubber base to it and all that, and that's been a very successful field play for us. It's been successful in a variety of ways, but we are finding that the main field here at Coleman, just through the heavy play, that's starting to wear down and break down, and so there's a need to upgrade that and bring that back to another level. So as we looked at this in the fall of 2014, from the Facilities Advisory Task Force, it was made up of community members, of staff members, of students, and of parents, they took a look at all of our needs. And when we looked at that entire project, I think there was almost $220 million of project needs. And then, as they looked at both the external needs as well as the internal needs of our school facilities, they determined what were the priorities and what were of value, and we determined that it needed to be across the board. But we also needed to look at our outdoor space. And so as we looked at our outdoor space back in 2014, it was determined, again, based on durability and based on player safety and based on health concerns and looking at cost and maintenance and all the different factors, that synthetic turf did make sense for us moving forward as a school district. And so in the referendum, we talked and presented in the review and comment, adding turf fields both at the west campus as well as the east campus. As we move forward with that, then, we continue to study. We've worked closely with our architects, working closely with our engineers who are involved in this work, construction managers. We've talked to numerous other school districts to find out what they're doing and how they're studying it. We too have done our research on it, both at administrative level but the school board level. The board finance committee obviously has been very engaged on this. We started looking at this as we were getting closer to preparing our bid documents late this fall and early winter. In December, the board facilities committee spent quite a bit of time talking about it, again, learning a lot of the research around it. We brought it to the school board as a full discussion at the December board meeting, and then, again, at the January board meeting. At that time, we had some of our consultants speak to it, and this was really the slide that we were talking about when we were looking at the synthetic infill and the choices we were making as it related to costs, as it related to durability, as related to player safety. We know that this is a third-generation turf that we're looking at, so some of the findings of previous studies, this has gone beyond it. It's made improvements as it relates to the actual turf, and it's made improvements as it relates to not having metal contaminants in the rubber and installation. They've improved that as well, so we've improved the drainage process, again, because of just the research being done on that. The excessive heat issue is one that we'll continue to monitor. We have an excessive heat plan already in place as a district as a whole, so this would certainly be included in that. But when it gets down to sorting out crumb rubber and sorting out other alternative fills, there's very little research that we can find, scientific research, as relates to the alternative fill. And because there's just so few of them out there yet, 98% of the synthetic turfs in the country are crumb rubber filled, 97% here in Minnesota are crumb rubber filled, and so we've studied that. We know that there's no current studies that show elevated health and risk factors from the crumb rubber. EPA has addressed this, and yep, we are aware that the EPA is going to move forward with doing some further study, and we'll continue to track that. And we will continue to manage that with our suppliers, with our contractors. But, and then if there are findings, we will be responsive to it, just like we're responsive in other situations where we've learned more information. Again, it's tied together of how we need to make sure that we have the fields ready. And so tonight, the board will not be acting necessarily on the turf itself, but they will be acting on the groundwork, the preparation work, the soil work for the east campus. Also, when we're approving the high school bids, we're preparing the soil for synthetic turf as well at the west campus. So... So the administration is recommending that we go forward with it, that we do have appreciated and I think the comments that have been shared tonight, again, there's some follow-up that we will certainly bring to that. The information shared, I think, are things that we've all reflected on at an administrative level. I think board members probably have done a very similar thing. And so we appreciate those comments and those have sharpened, you know, my reflections on this going forward and my concerns and ensuring the safety piece of this, that I still believe this is the right direction to go and that's why the recommendation is shaped in that manner. So this is where we stand tonight. Again, the board will not be taking action on the turf itself, but they'll be taking action on the plans for the soil. The turf will probably be in another week, we're just now working through that contract and getting the details worked out on that. But I'll pause at this point if the board has further discussion or questions. We have some of our consultants present tonight that may be able to answer things or if there's anything from the administrative team.
Are there any questions or points anybody would like to make or input from our consultants? We'll start with the board first.
Could we address the question around waiting and the time? I know that as, when we went through the process of preparing to do the referendum in the late summer, early fall of 2014, there was a great deal of discussion at the planning level around fields and where they're at and the need in the city and the community and the school district specifically. But then, I'm wondering about the concept of this, what they're requesting in terms of waiting. What are the implications of doing that?
One and...
We can have introductions and then we'll build it to respond to that question around the timing. Chad, you?
Chad Redkey with Kraus Anderson Construction.
Von Dirks with World Architects and Engineers.
And Jay Palmeroy with Anderson Johnson Associates Civil Engineers.
So the biggest question is the impact to delay on waiting. I would say from a constructability standpoint, we know we're already down fields in the district. That was one of the reasons that drove the referenda is the availability of play space within the district. Currently, in order to move forward with high school construction, we need to occupy current grass fields that are just north of the existing synthetic turf practice field at the high school. So we'll be down an additional field in that location. We also know that waiting has a direct correlation to inflation as we move forward, and so there is a cost impact to that as well. But from a constructability standpoint, that really is the big issue, is that we're going to be going down in fields. We've worked extensively with Troy Stein and the other members of the district in terms of looking at schedules and playtime and moving forward with something that will give you the ability to continue using space that meets your needs.
I've been reading some of the comments on, well, a lot of the comments on change.org and some questions that the board has received from parents. Many have asked about why natural grass is not an alternative, and I'm wondering if any of you can provide a little background as to why any synthetic product is being considered.
That's a lot of question. Natural grass fields need a lot of maintenance, obviously, to keep them up to a performance standard where you can use them thirty, forty times a season, let alone hundreds of times as a synthetic turf field could be used, would be used. Obviously, with maintenance practices on natural grass, with fertilizer, water use, phosphorus, pesticides, et cetera, it takes quite a bit of maintenance to keep those up to a standard. Years ago, in 2003, it was decided that two of the fields be converted over for that very reason. They just, they're overused, synthetic turf answers that need. As far as the alternatives on the synthetic turf side of things, as superintendent mentioned earlier, ninety-eight percent of the fields nationwide use crumb rubber. It's the time-tested product for the infill. Alternative fields of the twelve to thirteen thousand fields that are in use now, only a couple hundred have an alternative infill, meaning EPDM or coconut or cork or a thermoplastic bonded material, which were used not so much for environmental issues but more for playability, more dirt-like, maybe harder, maybe better balance for baseball, for instance. So there's very little background on those alternative infill studies, hence the crumb rubber. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Can you also share your company's, their engineers or consultants?
World Architects and Engineers. World Architects and Engineers. And then I'm with Anderson Johnson Associates.
Kraus Anderson Construction.
So as a follow-up to that, if we went with pure grass fields, my understanding is that they're going to wear out before the school year wears out. And they're really not going to be playable for us.
More than likely, and you know, I think your maintenance staff could speak to that.
Other questions? State discussions?
Well, Stan, what helped me make up my mind on this was the question about children's safety. Because as many people in the audience pointed out and as we've said in our discussions, that's the number one consideration. And we have children in the district, my oldest is actually in kindergarten, my youngest is a one-year-old, so I'll be playing soccer with my children on these fields for eighteen years. I've looked through all of the studies that we've been referring to, the ones that talk about what it does for children as far as impact injury or play, long-term considerations. We've looked at what other states have looked into, and I've been comforted by what I've seen in these studies. By the notion that there's long-term assessments of inhalation that have shown no correlation to any of the dangers. But there's a real fear when you first start to hear about something like this. And when we first started to hear about it, that's why we looked into it, that's why we spent so much time looking into it and we spent these months talking about it. And for those of you who have only heard about the issue this week, I understand the fear because I felt it too. But we are considering children's safety and we're at a point in our conversations in these public meetings where we feel that that's addressed, our children are safe. And now moving on, we have all these other responsibilities, planning for the long-term health of our district. We still have more discussions that we'll have, but there is a comfort level that's come with time and research on this issue in particular.
I want to echo some of Amir's comments. I don't need to repeat what he said, but what he, what I will share is that his experience with kindergarten students and what many of our speakers have shared with young children was my experience when I moved to Adina from California in 2000. I had an infant and two elementary children. And it was the 2003 referendum that introduced me to the concept of turf. I didn't understand it, it didn't make sense to me. I had the opportunity to be a parent representative on that referendum committee and I asked a lot of questions, probably many of them to Kraus Anderson at that time as well, to just gain that research. So I've had that opportunity to look into this, to now live with the results, to have my students play on these fields for over a decade. And that has also provided a depth of understanding for me that was brand-new when I joined Minnesota and when I joined this district. What I appreciate is the respect that I was always given with my questions, and that's no different this time. What we've had the opportunity to do as a board is to go into depth, spend time with the questions and deeply appreciate the concerns that are expressed. And it is right that the research is continuing because we're, I don't know that anybody can say that this is finished. We are working with the best research available at this point in time and with additional research, we will continue to study it and respond accordingly.
I'll just chime in too, because I think you're entitled to understand how the decision was reached, and this is a decision that is being recommended by the administration, but which was also considered by the facilities committee, as others have mentioned in great depth, and it was the facilities committee recommendation to send it to the board. The idea of having our kids play on ground-up rubber tires intuitively does not sound like a great idea. I have that same feeling. I prefer grass at an intuitive level, I'm completely with you, and all of the comments that I've heard tonight are things that I've had to work through to get to where I am now. And I completely acknowledge the legitimacy of all of the feelings that you are expressing. But at the end of the day, the board has to make its decision based on science and facts, not on emotion, not on media reports. And as a sidebar, I do have to mention the media which was here to hear the controversy, then all packed up and left to hear the answers to the concerns you've raised. So I have to say, I give fairly limited credibility to what I read in the press, and I think all of you need to do that too. You should look at the actual studies, look at the actual evidence. As Rick quoted the EPA, this is the EPA statement, "There have been no current studies showing elevated health risk from tire crumb." And other than going by that information, I don't know what else a school board can go on. There are risks to kids from playing on ill-kept grass fields, there are risks to kids from playing on grass fields that use pesticides, there are risks to kids from using new products that no one is familiar with and we don't know what they do. We are being asked to approve a product that has been in use for twenty years and has been continuously improved over that time. We've been assured by the scientific peer-reviewed literature, we've been assured by the experts that this is the appropriate way to go. And I've got to tell you, I've listened to all of you very carefully but did not hear anything new tonight that would make me change my support of the administration's recommendation. But we, as Regina said, will continue to monitor things. We certainly do not have closed minds about it, but we have to go by the facts as they are on the ground at the moment.
And I think the only thing I would add is this wasn't something that we've just started discussing this last couple of weeks. This has been coming up, like Sarah said, since 2014, I think even before in 2003. It has been continually reviewed and continually assessed, and we've wrestled with all the same issues that you brought up. But again, I think we went back to the data from the scientific studies, peer-reviewed journals. There's nothing there at this point that would make us have a different decision.
Any other discussion? Rick, you have more in your presentation?
I do, I just, thank you gentlemen for being here and we will be calling you potentially for action a little bit later. As relates to some of the work going on, our strategic work, again, facilities and furniture, the district is continuing to the dialogue on personalized learning and not that we're going to land on that because that is a concept, it's taking best practices we're currently using in the classroom with our teachers and getting some alignment. We've gotten, received some great input from teachers. We'll continue to get the best practices going on, but it's an exciting piece of how we're going to roll that forward. We are going to have an extensive staff training program and appreciate Randy Smazl and his team's leadership around that because in order for the strategic work to be successful, we need to make sure that our teachers are strongly equipped. They've got great talents, but as we ask them to continue to look at how we serve our kids going forward, we know it's going to take some training. We're assessing staffing models as well, making sure that we have the right staff in place for us as we continue to move forward. We feel we've got quality teachers, quality support staff across the board, we're excited about that. School programs, we'll continue to study that. We're talking more about daily programs in school, start and end times with bus schedules. But the bottom line is that this will all be shaped and brought together for the community to understand, for our students to understand in November and December of 2016. So as we look for the fall of 2017, when a lot of our construction work will be complete, when we're liking grade level changes, when we're rolling out the new schedules and starting our journey more directly on personalized learning, we will have six months again to be able to put this together and then bring it forward to show the positive future that we have going forward. Again, it's not a revolution, it's an evolution, but it's important work that we'll make sure is public as it goes forward. A couple of leadership updates, so we are moving forward with the hiring of a Southview middle school principal. We have that event happening tomorrow where the staff, parents and students, we'll be interviewing them soon behind that, the following week, we'll be interviewing for the Highland elementary principal position and after that, the assistant principal at Valley View Middle School. Also, we're in the final stages of planning out the Adina Learning Institute, which is set for August fifteenth and sixteenth. And that's kind of a quick flyover of things happening in the district. Any other specific questions the board might have?
Just want to, the interviews for Southview's principal is Wednesday, not tomorrow.
Did I say tomorrow? Excuse me, it's Wednesday, Gwen, at what time?
Three to four-thirty?
Three to four-thirty.
Okay, and then, do we have Highland's date set?
Yes.
Yes, it's on the 21st of April and it begins at four o'clock.
Twenty-first of April for Highland's, great, thank you. Thanks for the catch.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Guiding Change Document for Elementary, Middle and High School Daily Schedules. Looks like you've got that one again.
I do. So as we look at our schedules, we are looking at ways to enhance student time as well as the staff time to be more effective, so we're looking at that daily schedule. And what we want to do is, and the Guiding Change Document is a framework that allows the study to be done by a team of staff members at both the elementary, middle and high school levels. So we're looking at the best way we can bring this together, but we also want to make sure it's locked together, that it fits the elementary, the middle and the high school, that they work in tandem on this. And so the board has some parameters that will help guide that and shape that study as it goes forward. We'll do a completion date, we're looking at early fall with a check-in with the board sometime in June to say, here's how this is moving forward. We're taking best practices, we're taking a look at what we're currently doing and seeing how we can mix those two together and then do it in a sustainable way.
All right, thank you. Any questions on the Guiding Change? I think that this is going to go before teaching and learning.
Yeah, I think teaching and learning, we did briefly discuss it at our last meeting and then...
No, I don't think in the last meeting.
We didn't discuss it.
We didn't discuss it.
Given the document, there you go, and then we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
So it'll get board discussion in between action, great. Any other questions on that?
I think some of the things that I wanted to point out particularly around elementary is that although we're talking about, from what I understand, we're talking about language back in the elementaries, this schedule, this looking at a new schedule is not with the intention of hopefully affecting the other types of, I guess, elected, if you want to call them that, but the specials, art, music.
Media center.
Media center, et cetera, gym, looking to work the schedule so that it can be added in without affecting the other programs.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we're looking at time in general, seeing how do we block our time differently and how do we do that? And we are adding, you know, a new topic, a new subject into it, so we're not adding to the day, so we're just going to figure out how do we do within the day? Figure that all out. But those are all key components of the elementary experience, so we'll make sure that that's, that is part of the discussion.
So maybe if I could clarify my own...
I probably didn't say it the best way.
No, I think it was good, my own understanding, a foreign language will be returned to elementary schools and it's the delivery, the method of delivery that is being considered along with, and I'm looking at Randy Smazl because he will say this far better than I can, but what is the best delivery with all of the other competencies being maintained in elementary school? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Can you untangle that?
So I think that is our, that is our challenge moving forward, is looking at the educational competencies that are desirable for the elementary program and then looking at different ways that we can manipulate time to continue to get better results. And so part of looking at the schedule is to examine where those areas are where we can continue to evolve how we use time and unlock some opportunities there.
You said it much more eloquently.
Yes, thank you.
With no other discussion, the next item for discussion is the Guiding Change Plan for District Start Times for Elementary, Middle and High School. Rick, you've got that one too?
Yes, again, it's a framework for us to do the problem solving around and we'll be seeking input from the Board Policy Committee prior to bringing this forward for our final recommendation. It is the balance of that educational priorities with the economic efficiencies of a bus schedule. Adina does own its own buses and we run a very effective and efficient transportation schedule on the three system, or three-tiered approach. And so with the ninth grade going up to the high school, that does change our work and it also gives us a chance to pause and step back to say what works best for us going forward on the start of a school day and the end of the school day. And so... And so, again, this will continue to get more discussion, both here at the board level as well as with the community and the staff, and trying to find that sweet spot in between of what we'll be seeking. This, again, will come back to the board along the way, but we're hoping to have a recommendation brought to the board in September or October of next fall. And this would begin for, again, fall of 2017.
And again, these are guiding change, they're just guides for the administration to follow and putting together a plan.
That's correct.
Can we just share why we, why this is, why we're actually having a guiding change document on looking at start times? I know the board has asked just for us to research the start times because, you know, there's always the ongoing discussion about our middle schoolers, you know, starting school at 7:40 in the morning, some of them being on the bus by seven or even earlier. Maybe we could just address why we're taking a look at this?
Well, it's our opportunity to do it. I mean, one is because with the ninth grade going to the high school, that changes a number of that transportation, and, I mean, within the guiding change document, we're not recommending a change to that late start at the high school. That's been a key piece that I think we do want to hold on to. So then that creates a shift on how we can serve our middle schools and elementary schools. And so we are going to step back again, look at what best practices, what, look at some of the research. We have several metro school districts alone that have just recently made some changes in their schedules, will certainly use the data that they've collected, again, going out and listening to what some of the priorities are at the site level as well as at the community level, to get that best practice, and then to blend that together to try to find a recommendation that is both educationally sound and economically feasible.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add just another comment on that same guiding change document, there are several things I appreciate about what will be studied with this, but one specific item listed on our intended results is considering student need for sleep and impact on families as a priority. So I appreciate that and endorse it. It's the right direction for us to take a look at. A good move.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The next item on the agenda is Scheduled Review of Policies. Rick, looks like you get a break here.
Thank you.
So we'll start with Policy 513. Someone from the Policy Committee?
Wrong ones up. Here it is, Policy Notes. 513, this policy is up for discussion this evening regarding student promotion acceleration and retention and early kindergarten admission. The key points that have been put together in this policy are to help guide people through the policy. Part of that language, as we took a read through it at the Policy Committee level, wasn't necessarily helpful. So I do want to extend thanks to Stacy Geier and Jeff Jorgensen for contributing to that clarifying language that's in the draft that we have this evening. There are specific changes in the appendices to make them, what we hope, easier to navigate. Appendix Two specifically clarifies who the decision-making team is at each level as well as the procedure that happens next. And then Appendix Four is a new rubric for assessment of whether the right change is being made, how to discuss that. So if there are any points that other board members have on this policy that they'd like the committee to consider further, let us know, and we'd be glad to do that.
And you just say Appendix Four is new.
The rubric in the appendix is new.
Yeah.
There has been an Appendix Four, but the way that this one is structured is including a rubric that is different than the way the policy was laid out previously.
Great. Thank you.
Move on.
Any current discussions, comments? We'll go on to Policy 538.
Okay, 538. 538 and field trips and travel comes up with the Policy Committee on a regular basis, and what I've shared with the community before, but do want to reiterate that as a board, we endorse the fact that field trip opportunities are important, and we see a lot of value. We also want to make sure that they are conducted safely and that there are the right kinds of helpful guidelines in place as trips are organized. For this policy, again, I want to thank Stacy Geier and Sarah Shandell for navigating a large number of changes, as this policy has gone through many different updates and revisions. I also want to point out that Susan Tennyson has done a great deal of research to help us navigate international travel and safety, and we definitely appreciate her work as well, as we try to support continued international travel. The board had an opportunity to review this policy in our March 14th workshop. There was focus at that time on Appendix Five with the Chaperone Agreement. There have been no changes since that particular board review. Policy, the Policy Committee is making the recommendations in this evening's packet to provide clarity to families about non-school-sponsored field trips. This draft also includes the creation of an extended trip coordinator, recognizing that there are a lot of details to put together when navigating a trip, so we're hoping that this new position or set of responsibilities can be of help to families and to staff members. We also continue to express concern for equity of access, opportunities, and affordability. So these are some of the key points that are addressed in this particular draft. So we will continue to look at the field trip policy, but at this point in time, our goal is to have discussion this evening as appropriate. If everyone agrees that the draft works in May, we'll bring it forward for action so that there is something in place for planning for 2016, '17 trips.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Question. You talk about the district will create a partnership here, I'm on page 196. So are we targeting a percentage for scholarships, or how do we think about that? Is it based on need, or do we touch on it somewhere else in the policy?
We don't have it specifically defined. Need is definitely a component, but as we've discussed this in the Policy Committee, the recognition is that it differs quite a bit depending on the group. If there's a very large group, there may be a capacity for many fundraising opportunities that can provide scholarships for participants in that group who have a need. The need may shift if there's a group of just a few students participating in an activity, they want to travel, but then it's just a difference in ratio, that it's a small number of students looking at an opportunity. So it hasn't been defined further, but are you asking that we perhaps review that?
It's, there's no easy answer.
Okay.
How are you thinking about it as part of the discussion was more the question? Thanks, Regina.
Right, because I think at our work session, I believe, when we discussed this, one of the concerns around field trips was some of the exorbitant costs to some of the bigger trips, whether it's a band tour or a choir trip or whatever. You know, for going overseas or even going to one of the coasts, it gets very expensive, and it's not just families who may qualify for certain, you know, programs, it's for families of all kinds.
Yes.
You know, it can be an expensive cost and then limit students' abilities to participate. I know as a board, we struggled, even during that discussion, to try to come to some kind of a resolution of how to address this. One of my concerns, as I looked at the policy, was around the non-sanctioned, district sanctioned field trips and how we're addressing that, and really, what, how do we choose what is sanctioned and what isn't? I mean, I know this has to be an educational thing, but I think there's field trips currently going on, but you could easily say have an educational component to them, yet they're not school sanctioned. And I think I'd like to see clarity around that.
Okay.
Because I think that we need to have, I just think it's a risk sometimes when we have field trips that are tradition in the district, yet they're not officially sanctioned, yet they continue on.
Mm-hmm. That's a good question. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other comments? All right. Moving on, the next item is Early Education Schematics. Susan and Vaughn?
We have slides.
We do have slides on this.
Thank you, members of the board. Okay, so, no, it's on, no, it's on. Thank you, members of the board. We just wanted to bring you up to date a little bit on the early childhood planning. I just want to start out a little bit about process, and then Vaughn will kind of go through what the schematic designs are. This is similar to the processes we've used for the high school and the elementary schools to date. The early childhood planning, we had given you some updates a few months back, and then we took a pause for a little bit while we finished up some programming decisions, and then we've come back to it. I will say that we reconvened the early childhood core planning team, which is comprised of some staff in the early childhood, both early childhood special ed and the Edina Family Center, as well as parents. And we looked at a variety of topics. When we brought the team back last week, the schematic design really hadn't changed a lot. We just sort of affirmed that where we had placed things still fits with the programming direction. So that being said, the core planning team has agreed and signed off on the schematic design, understanding all the other construction issues and challenges that we, that we always have in any construction project, but they're excited to be able to move forward to really create that comprehensive early childhood space and not have it be so separated between you're in early childhood special ed when you're over here in the building, and you're in early childhood family ed over here, and really building that cohesive program for our earliest learners.
So this approach will be very similar to other ones that we presented as we've gone through the district. One of the things that we've tried to do from the beginning is rather than attack these projects in a lineal fashion, we're designing everything simultaneously. And that allows us to do a number of different things, including look at criteria as you progress from early childhood all the way through 12th grade and on to adult education programs in the district. It also gives us an equity approach in terms of how we look at the buildings. And so we start with the groups in looking at both commitments and criteria. And those commitments, again, are things that are more the quality of the space or how you'd like it to look. Criteria are the functional relationships within the space. And we really start with not asking about questions of which rooms do you want us to renovate, but how do you want this building to function? And so as we go through the program, I won't go into reading each one of these, you have this in front of you, and this will be available online, but you can see page after page of criteria talking about how the building should function and work. Starting with the first criteria, the design shall designate one main early childhood entry. As we take a look at this building, this building's a complicated one in that it has lots of different stakeholders and users within the building. And so we balance all of these as we go through, and we rearrange the spaces and take a look at what needs to be achieved within the building. So if we look at all of our different tenants on the first floor right now, we have our Kids Club programs, we have community ed, we have block care, we have ECFE, we have ECSE, we have five different entry points into the building, we have some adult woodshop space along the side, we have multiple parking lots that enter into the building, so very confusing when you're trying to figure out how you approach the building. Here's a more detailed floor plan from that. But what evolved was really this concept diagram, and you've seen similar diagrams for the elementaries and for the high school and for the middle school. This really looks at bringing people in through one common entry point to the building to an early childhood office that would share functions for each of those different programs, be they family education, preschool, or special education. And then looking at how those classes are organized within the building, where we would have support spaces like multipurpose rooms or family gyms, how parent education would incorporate into the diagram. And it really relocates into this type of building. So our new main entry point would come off the east side of the building. We would have our parking lot designated along that side of the building for early childhood. As you're aware, we'll be looking at the eastern parking lot between Southview, Normandale Buses, parent pickup, all the different people that use this as we untangle that parking lot. And really, what this design will do is it will create a secure line along the, sort of, the north part of the building so that we can keep our early childhood and parents within one area of the building, so we'll have a secure entry point into that office like we will have at all of the other buildings coming into the space. Our main offices will be located directly adjacent to that entry point, as well as a parent commons area directly in front of that entry as you come in. So as you get oriented in the building, as you're waiting for students or different instructors, you have a place that can be common to that. We have our multipurpose room and our motor skills and family education on opposite sides of the building to provide direct access for those spaces. And you can see our classrooms are organized throughout the building. As we laid them out initially, we looked at the different age groups that would be in those spaces, but we also know that based on what we're doing at the elementaries, it was important not to designate any one classroom as single function, but to look at how they might change over the years as you have different programs and different age groups in those classroom spaces. We have staff office space distributed through that area as well. We really are using all of the space in this part of the building for early childhood, with the exception of our woodshop will remain a woodshop with their own entry point coming into that area of the building and a designated area for them to access public toilets that are outside of that secure zone as we come into the space. Our community ed offices remain at the front of the building. Our adult education spaces remain at the front of the building so that we can create that secure zone moving back into the south side for our early childhood program. And that really is sort of the overview of it. I know we're up at 30,000 feet at schematic design, and our next stages will be to move into user group meetings like we've done with the other projects to start to add detail to these spaces.
Say, one comment I would make as a user of the family center in the past, the secure entrance, I think, is great. It's something we haven't had at the family center. The only downside to that is the parking, and if the parents can only enter through that side door, and if that parking lot is full and you're dealing with babies and toddlers, it will not make as a friendly welcoming to get there. Because I remember many times, you know, you're up in that parking lot, you've got your stroller, you've got all your stuff, and you're trying to get into the building. So just something we may want to think about to prepare us, because I get the secure entrance, and I think it's a valid, valid thing to add. I just, I know the parents are coming in from all different entrances based on what they're dealing with at the moment.
Some of the concerns along the north side were with the strollers, that there's no accessible route on the north side of the building, and so getting the strollers up the stairs proved problematic. We think that, we know that the eastern lot needs a lot of untangling. Let's, I mean, let's be fair. There's a lot of work that has to be done there with rerouting and retraining, and that will be part of the overall design as we move forward as well. This will allow us to restructure who parks in what area, how we sign the lots for that better use to create better dedicated parking along that east side of the building to reflect that issue.
And part of that entrance as well that we're talking about with the new office area and everything is really looking at that space out there, because right now there's stairs coming up on the one side, and they've got kind of that weird ramp thing over on the side. So really trying to create that a more logical space. But indeed, we've had numerous conversations between the early childhood discussions, the district office discussions, the Normandale discussions, the Southview discussions about parking, and we know that we're challenged with that, but we do feel that some of it's going to have to be a behavioral shift. I know, you know, some of us in the district office love parking over there, but we can probably park somewhere else where it's a lot easier for the early childhood families to come in there. We also know that over here, where this is still the main entrance and the welcome center and stuff, we have had discussions about how could we keep this secured area, but, you know, understanding that maybe we need to have some flexibility. So maybe when there's a large event going on or something, we have some way that families can still access that space and funnel into the office from the other way, but obviously that would be our ideal entry, would be to come in from the east.
And as with Southview's entrance moves someday, then a lot of that parking will move to that other, and I think there's, there's some movement there, so.
We'll be looking at the entire east campus here as a whole as we move forward in the parking lot designs.
I have a question about the woodshop space, two parts. One, was it considered at any point to move it to one of the maker spaces at the high school or another one of our sites? But two, is it space that is needed as part of the early childhood renovation?
If Val were here, she'd say it's absolutely needed. We did take a look at...
Not as part of the early childhood.
Not as part of the early childhood, no, we don't have a lot of toddlers using this stuff. But we did talk about that, actually, as we went through the high school and looked at space. It has a tremendous community use to it, and in order to continue that, we found, A, it would not work as well with high school access and secure entry points coming in, and B, it's in the right location in terms of its proximity to community education. And so we decided that since that was not part of our referendum to relocate that, it made the most sense to leave that in that location and to work with how our secure entrance does allow our parents to come in without conflicting with that space.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just add, too, that we actually had a lot of conversations with the early childhood core planning team, and there's a lot of strong affinity with the early childhood staff and those woodshop participants, and really wanting to keep that intergenerational experience nearby.
That is a beloved space.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks.
Next, we move to our action items. The first item is the District Office Schematic Design Proposal. Can I get a motion to advance the schematic designs?
So moved.
Wait a second. Yes. Same team?
Same team.
No wonder you didn't move.
Yes, thank you for putting those back to back. So we know that as part of the referendum of redoing the first floor for our early childhood space, also looking at the second floor with the Normandale, which you've seen before, and so part of that is the expansion of Normandale into what is currently some of the district office space. the district office space on second floor. And so, it is relocating district office up to the third floor. So, just as we've done with our other teams, we've had a core planning team of district office staff, and how do we create space on the third floor for the district office function as well as maintaining that strong community aspect of community education and a community center feel? So, we have met, the district office core planning team has met several times in February, March, mostly March and April, and so, we've had a schematic design, and we just wanted to bring that to your attention today. You've seen this before, but we would like some formally approving of the schematic design tonight to proceed.
So, this space was a challenge for Susan. She had to move from co-facilitator to actual participant in the design process as a member of the district office, so she figured out how to do that, make that transition.
My space is really nice.
Same, same basic principles here. We start with commitments, look at commitments and criteria for the space in terms of functionally, how do things work? And with this building, the district office is in sort of a key spot as we consider Normandale and the possibility for Normandale expansion, how we relook at kitchen space, its location on the second floor is problematic for that, as well as our secure entrance points for Normandale as we look at security. So, relocating the district office was a very important piece as we went through. We knew that the plan needed to be flexible and allow for different uses, but it also needed to work in conjunction with the space that we're up here on the third floor in. We've got some of our district functions up here, but we also have a number of the meeting rooms, the boardroom, our large group gathering space that the district office accesses on a regular basis. Our welcome center would stay on the first floor as part of this, but we'd be looking to relocate those district offices to the upstairs. It's our existing building here, our site that we'll be untangling. The existing district office layout, you can see that this used to be classrooms back when this was a high school. It's been converted in 2004. And this really is the diagram again, starting with that diagram of how we looked at spaces, knowing that we would need a conference center, which is the existing boardrooms and meeting rooms on the north side of this third floor, and a project center, which would support our instructional departments for the district office function, as well as our operational departments for that. We have our main two stairs, which are our public stairs on the northwest and northeast corners of the building, and we wanted to maintain those as we went up. And so, this really became the layout for our district office functions. Not a lot changes on the north side of the building in terms of our conference space in this area. Our instructional offices run along the east side of the building. We're relocating some of our community ed classroom functions to the west side of the building as a result of that. Our operations moves into the former workspace, and we have our collaborative zone for those offices in between that area. Collaborative zones down in the center of the space as well. Secure entry points at the front and the back of that area, as well as some shared reception space. Susan, maybe you want to add more to this? She's jumping into detail.
I was going to say, well, I've been living this a little bit, but there's also a secured entrance point down here on this side as well. And really, the goal, as Vaughn has said, is to try to create a logical wayfinding for the consumer who's coming up to the third floor. So, when they come up to the third floor, particularly if they come up the public elevator, there would be a clear understanding of this is where you would go for community ed and then you would go to the other side more for the district office function. And we have been looking at, really the rationale came back to it's really where it is right now, it's, community ed has done a wonderful job of making use of when space has become available, but it's a little popcorned if you think about it that way. You know, there's, well, okay, and then somebody comes up, and I know it's always a challenge for me when somebody says, "I have a class in 329," and I have to think, okay, which side is 329 on? So, this will be a lot easier for our users to find. And really trying to group and create a more collaborative space for the district office as opposed to just all individual cubes. And we've been having a lot of discussions about what does that collaboration look like? We know that it probably, you know, where on the spectrum of modern office feel is what we're trying to work through, but we know that it probably isn't just a replication of move what's on second floor up to third floor. We know we can do a little bit more collaboration with that. And then, we also needed to look at, we have some tenants in this building, and so, really trying to centralize them as well over here in this, I'm directionally challenged today, but in the, what is this?
Southwest.
Southwest, thank you, southwest corner, to again, try to create an ease and say, if you're a tenant, you're in one area. So, right now, we have, you know, we have a tenant over here, we have some tenants over here. So, again, just trying to make it more logical for the community space. We do have a little space here in pink that currently says to be determined. We haven't exactly figured out what that space is, it's kind of a placeholder right now. We're trying to see how are we make sure that we've got the same amount of footprint that we need for community ed on the other side of the hallway, we have the same amount of footprint that we need for district office. Currently, that space is where we have some of our itinerant health staff, people who come and go a lot, we do early childhood screening, that will be moving to the first floor, obviously, with the early childhood. So, really trying to save that space that could become another community space if we look, if it looks like we need some more conference room space, so we're trying to keep that as a placeholder just in case. The main thing that we know is that there isn't going to be dollars in the referendum, obviously set aside for a wholesale redo of this. And so, it'll probably be a phased process and trying to take advantage of the spaces that are there right now in terms of there's a classroom space that we can put some people in, but trying to look at how do we maximize that a little bit.
Great. Any questions? Any discussion?
Just remind me again the timing on when this would actually occur.
Of the construction?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're trying to keep all the dominos, you know, hitting one. So, ideally, we're thinking that this would probably take place sometime during the 16, 17 school year, knowing that we would need to be vacating that to make space for the Normandale renovations. And then, the early childhood would probably be next summer as well.
Thanks.
Hearing no other questions, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. The next item is voting on the elementary school additions. In this, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution which rejects the bids for the elementary school additions and renovations.
So moved.
Presenter is Margot.
Good evening. Well, the majority of our bids came in at or under budget. We did have five components of the elementary bids that came in significantly over, or over, and so, we are recommending that we reject the bids as the resolution says. And as administrative team, architect team, and construction management team, we are working together, have been for a couple of weeks, on brainstorming about ideas in terms of scope, schedule, and funding to reframe that and bring that back through the facilities committee, actually, on working with them on Thursday ongoing. We're meeting again tomorrow. So, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
As a note, we had a work session before this meeting and spent about an hour plus just on this topic. Could we give some sort of, maybe Lenny or Rick, kind of recap on some of the things that we discussed about the ramifications of not accepting the bid? I mean, there's state issues that guide our work in terms of timing and how we can react to these things differently, and then, how that fallout would come in terms of timing and types of things that we were discussing.
I think I'm going to call on our architect and construction manager to help me with it. I'll kick it out the door, just, again, it's a full project, so while the bids were over for the elementary and we had favorable bids at the high school level, this still is a hole. And so, we need to figure out how we're going to make this whole thing successful, and so, it is this modifying the schedule, the spending where we need to, and yet, still reaching the scope. And I'll ask Vaughn and Chad to kind of chip in again, just if you can talk a little bit to some of the planning that we've got as far as next steps.
I'll start with an overview concept. I mentioned earlier in the presentation that we're simultaneously designing all the projects, mostly so that we can keep things in balance, that we can make sure that as we're trying to do one thing or another, that it spans district wide. And I would say that that also includes the fact that these projects represent a whole referendum. There's scope within that referendum that needs to be achieved. And as we look at all the projects, we want to make sure that we're able to achieve that scope in each of the aspects. So, when we look at rejecting bids for the elementary, that doesn't mean that that's the only area we would be making adjustments. We still will be able to implement full referenda scope as we will at the high school, and just awarding high school bids doesn't mean we won't be making changes or modifications there as well. We're already looking at that with the early childhood pieces, with the middle schools that we'll continue with, so we'll continue to adjust to make our changes minimal in terms of their effect, but still achieve the referenda scope and more as we move forward with those aspects. And so, I'll let Chad talk a little bit about some of the strategies that we'll start to employ as we do that.
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the differences between elementary and high school pieces as well is that the changes that, maybe not the dollar changes, but the making those schedule component changes and other variables to the bids that we had to award and move forward would be problematic, whereas the high school, making some of those changes is not going to be as problematic and is not as big of a concern up there. So, that's the reason for the recommendation to reject and, you know, retool some of the elementary pieces and not at the high school. Some of those can be made post-bid, and we can look at alternatives there as well as look at the elementary pieces and then put those back out. One of the biggest concerns right now is the schedule and the amount of work that's out in the school market right now. And anytime you can look at taking work out of the summer schedule, there's definite advantages to pricing that come with that. And so, that's one of the strategies that we'll be looking at, is looking at how to move things out of the summer months, but still do them in a way that's effective and safe for kids and learning, so.
So, when we reject the bid, the expectation is that we may make a modification to the timing of, well, we will make a modification to the timing of the project. We'll send it out for bid. The expectation is the ideas that we put forth in the referendum and that we put to MD&E will end up being in whatever project gets completed.
Absolutely. While we might break the project into different scope packages or schedules as we take a look at things, we want to maintain those design issues and the referendum issues that we worked with the core planning teams on. So, this Wednesday, we'll be reconvening with the elementary groups to talk to them as a whole about what we're looking at and what the challenges are, and retake a look at how we make those minor scope adjustments within those projects. We'll be doing the same thing with the high school group, and as we reconvene our middle school group, we'll do the same things as well. We already had that conversation with the early childhood group. So, it's all about maintaining that scope of the referendum project, maintaining what the commitment was in terms of that vote, and making the adjustments in ways that we feel the project's consistent in.
Something I heard tonight was that, just so people understand, we will not be completing three elementary schools this summer. And the reason for that is so that we can extend the construction time over a longer period of time, which then, one element of that will be hopefully getting more bids that are less expensive than the bids that we received. The drawback to that, and one of the questions that we asked, is how do we manage this when our kids are in school? You know, whether it's, particularly if it's outside of the building, even though it's outside of the building, there's still construction equipment, it may affect play space, et cetera, and then, how you manage, you know, the learning that's going on? Can you guys address that a little bit?
There was already plans in place to address a lot of those concerns because we had planned on starting the additions this spring before school was out. And so, the projects really don't change in terms of how we address those issues. We had acoustic issues that we were dealing with, we had fencing issues, we had how students were safely accessed in the site. It simply shifts from a spring issue to a fall issue as we take a look at that.
Yeah, and we've also been working with the city on, you know, exiting and maintaining all those safety features while those jobs are going on, like Vaughn mentioned, even before school was out this year. That just shifts to potentially in the fall and getting those in place for when the kids come back, that everything's already in place and ready to go.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're on to the next action item, which is the Edina High School construction bids. Can I get a motion to approve the contracts as per the attached documents from Kraus-Anderson's construction for the high school?
So moved.
We get a presentation?
With this bid, as you can tell with the attachment, it's very detailed and many components to it. It's a large project in your attachment. A couple of things I would point out, and certainly Chad and Vaughn can chime in with additional information, is it is approving alternate number three, which is relocation of the tennis courts to the Creek Valley area, but that approval is pending, working through the watershed district. And so, it, and we anticipate that we will be able to do that, but we just want to be clear that the approval is pending that. And there are two bids in detail, one for operable wall and motorized bleachers, that because of the timing of when this bid was received and needing to get it prepared for the board, that we're still working with the vendors on that. We'll bring those individually back to you. It will not slow up the project. And again, Chad can speak more in depth to that. But would we request your approval of the Edina High School additions and renovation bids?
Any questions?
Can I ask a question? Part of this bid is the field, the turf. I think we've all discussed that, that there is definitely a desire that some sort of a turf field would be superior to our grass and soil fields as they stand now. My question is, from what I understand when we are discussing this, right now, what we're approving is the initial cutting into the ground and preparing to have a turf field. What, how long is the process between cutting into the ground and then actually putting in the actual turf field, the chrome rubber, the other things that go with that?
At the high school campus that we've got right now, the turf fields are not slated to be usable until fall of '17. And so, but they, there is a great amount of underground utilities and other work that has to start to get in process for that. Demolition pieces that the work will start yet in the next month, but it will be not finalized until next spring of '17 in preparation. But there's a lot of underground components that have to get started. There's some utility relocates that need to be done, and there's some time periods that need to be waited for on settlement issues to make sure everything's good before the field is put in place.
Then I'm just going to ask the question, which would lead to my next question. When we've dug the, when it's all prepared and we're ready to move ahead with putting in the actual turf, if that were to be after, say, the EPA comes out with their findings, would we have the ability at that point to choose whatever product is appropriate based on those findings?
I mean, as far as the turf itself.
The fill, I guess.
Yes, and that's, that is not, that is not something that we're approving in this package tonight, the turf itself. This is the earthwork components for that. The subgrade preparation, if you will want to call it that, is very similar in the different applications. There is some differences, but it's similar.
Thank you.
I've got an unrelated question, in case anyone had a follow-up on that first. The question I had is board members received a couple of emails from labor organization representatives questioning the competence and maybe the integrity of one of the successful bidders, Ebert, and just wanted to give you a chance, can you comment on whether you have any concerns about that contractor?
Yeah, so the, I think the original concern came in regards to the elementary school projects, which we've already acted on and rejected, but as part of this packet, there was one workscope 6A that the apparent low bidder made an error and upon our review after the bids, has asked to withdraw their bids, but that puts Ebert as the second then, or the lowest responsible bidder. Kraus-Anderson has worked with them in the past. I don't know that there's any reason right now that the district should be rejecting their bid for that reason.
You're comfortable with their ability to perform adequately?
Yep.
Thank you.
We've done projects with Ebert before, both as a general contractor and under a construction management approach, and we share their opinion.
And they've worked with other school districts?
Yes, I've worked with Ebert previously also, and I also contacted or got information from two other districts that have current projects going on with them right now.
So, while we're not putting in the actual turf field until 2017, I don't want people to leave with the impression that that's when the decision is going to be made about the turf. So, while we're not putting in the actual turf field until 2017, I don't want people to leave with the impression that that's when the decision is going to be made about the turf fields. So I think there may have been some confusion.
Sure. I, I think this is, the high school is different than the next action item where the other fields that are, would bid separately from the high school are on a little bit different schedule. So I was referring to the high school schedule that's there.
But even then, even with the high school, we're still going to see, see a bid for the field, the infill and the turf itself well before 2017.
Part of that is, is looking at district-wide to have one manufacturer, one provider. And so, wanting to lock in prices at this year's current rates and not look at bidding at two or three different projects. Because then you could end up with multiple different manufacturers of your turf product, which isn't a benefit for maintenance and ongoing operations for the district. Yes.
Chad, can you? Chad or Vaughn, can you talk a little bit about, once this is approved now, we start construction at the high school? What does that mean to the families in the community and sort of how does this thing lay out over the next twelve to eighteen months or even six months would be helpful?
Sure, so at the high school project, the overall construction time period is, is yet to get started this month and to be fully complete by the fall of 2017. There's a couple of different milestones that are going to come with that. The major addition is really going to get started real quickly with all the earthwork operations and where that sits on the northwest corner of the building. And that's going to be in progress from this spring all the way through fall, summer of 2017. Then on the interior of the building, there's multiple different remodel areas. So we've looked at timing of this bid, what can we put in the package to have worked on in 2016 summer? And what is in 2017? On the inside of the building, the majority of the remodeling operations are in 2017. So, on the inside of the building, there is still work going on. There's work in the third floor commons and there's mechanical room improvements. And there's various areas where we're trying to get whatever we could this summer to limit the amount. That's all just in seventeen as well. So there'll be ongoing operations both summers, which are going to occupy a lot of that building. And there's some mechanical, electrical shutdowns and different things that have to be done. But it will be a very active site. Most of our operations to start here in April and May are going to be limited to the areas right to the north side of the turf field, the existing turf field on the west side, as well as to the north side of the building and down in the lower fields once school is out. So, a lot of site work operations and earthwork operations.
Thanks, Chad. Other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, Rick, we may have had a walk-in on the Edina Community Center site improvements.
Yep, I'd ask Margot to address that. The board does have a walk-in and if you can explain the, the walk-in if you would.
Initial information was provided in your board packet and what you have is one change that deleted the recommendation for an alternate, but the existing recommendation that you received last Friday to approve the contract with Max Steininger for the Edina Community Center site improvements with his earthwork and site improvements in preparation for artificial turf fields. It is not an approval for the actual turf itself. We are still, as mentioned earlier this evening, receiving final pricing on turf at this point in time and that'll come at a later time.
So can I get a motion to substitute the walked-in action item for the one that was in the board book? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now can I get a motion to approve the walked-in action item to approve the contract with Max Steininger?
So, second.
Margot, do you have anything to add that you haven't already told us?
Nothing additional.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the termination non-renewal recommendations. Can I get a motion to approve those recommendations?
So, second.
And. Gwen, could you, sorry, didn't mean to wake you up.
Ready.
Could you give us a little background for?
Yes, we do have some non-renouls and the reason for those, a variety of reasons. We, as we are working on student schedules, we may not need as many teachers in specific areas. And so there are reductions for that reason or budget cuts come with some of the staff.
And actually, what I meant was, I just kind of said your name loud. I was. Are there any questions for Gwen? So we do have a roll call on this one. Sarah, can you run us through?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Neville?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Katsla?
Aye.
Aye. So, motion passed. The next item is unrequested leave recommendations. Can I get a motion to approve the unrequested leave recommendations?
Second.
And Gwen, could you go through that one for us, please?
Yes, we do have two teachers who we are requesting be placed on unrequested leave of absence. And these are teachers who are tenured, but at this time, we do not have positions for them. And so, that is the reason for the recommendation.
Any questions or discussion? Sarah, I believe it's a roll call again.
Aye.
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 Katsla?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next action item is the general fund budget plan. Can I get a motion to approve the 2016-17 general fund budget plan?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Margot, could you run us through that?
Well, as you know, we've been working on the budget process since December and we have the Budget Advisory Task Force team help the administration develop recommendations, which were presented to you at the March fourteenth board meeting. And since that board meeting, and we also worked with finance committee through, throughout the winter. Since that board meeting, we have not had additional feedback to, to tweak or bring changes to you. So, the recommended approval tonight for the sixteen-17 budget plan is as it was presented at March fourteenth. Overall total of net reduction of five hundred and thirty-five thousand to the general fund budget, which is about a half a percent of our budget. And I would ask, answer any questions that you have and recommend approval.
Any questions? Discussion? I do want to thank the Budget Advisory Task Force for their work on this.
They were great to work with.
And hopefully we will see them again on some other issues. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Next is the teacher evaluation MOU. Can I get a motion to approve the teacher evaluation MOU for 2016-18?
Second.
Randy and Libby? You're both listed. Somebody going to take the lead here?
I'll do the update and Libby will handle the difficult questions. So, we have updated E M E partnership and school board partnership regarding the MOU for a teacher evaluation system. It was first drafted in 2013 and so this is an updating of that MOU agreement. Part of the changes to the MOU in, or some of the changes to the MOU, including the combination or merging of teacher evaluation and alt-comp. I'll just hit a, highlight a few of these in our resolution. Conversion from four rating levels to three in our proficiency descriptors. We combined descriptors, as an example, seventeen and, and four to have a, have a better way of making sure that best practices are implemented across our classrooms. And then we have our teacher evaluation committee developing and modifying the rubric on a regular basis. So we kind of pulled the rubric design out of the MOU and have assigned that to our teacher evaluation committee so that we can continually keep that updated. And as we have become more efficient in our process, we are proposing to increase the ratio of our, our teachers to coaches from seventy to one to eighty to one in 2017 and 18, which would be a reduction in one of our peer-coach positions in the 2017-18 school year. Those are a few of the changes. They are described in the additional information for the MOU. And I would just like to say publicly, we certainly appreciate our partnership with E M E. We've had a very effective committee and look forward to just continuing, continuing to problem solve with them as we work through things like this, particular MOU.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is purchase of the kindergarten through five reading program materials. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of the materials?
So moved.
Randy, are you up again?
Sure. Caroline Linden, myself, Lisa Hopkins, and a student presented at last month's board meeting regarding the purchase of our reading program materials for K five for next school year. And this resolution is just a reminder for a call to action from the board on that purchase. It's been about ten years since our last adoption. A couple of changes in our resolution from the last meeting was a change in price. We've reduced the price from two hundred and sixty-eight thousand to two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we've gotten a little bit better deal with our vendor. There's about sixty thousand dollars worth of items that are gratis items, so these are free items provided by the vendor. The consensus choice from our elementary language arts design team were these materials. So we're very excited with the work of that language arts design team. And the work or the materials that we will be purchasing will mirror the purchase that we did for the writing, writing materials one year ago. And then I would just say that there's, there's also a phase two and a phase three to this purchase. Phase two would be 2017 and 18, which would include adding materials to each of the elementary's leveled libraries in the schools. And then phase three would be 2018 and 19, where we would focus on purchasing single copies of books for classroom use. This is phase one of, of a multi-year process, but we are very excited about the materials, the quality, the rigor. And again, a much-needed update to what we have for reading support in our K five program.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the purchase of L M S from Schoolology. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of the learning management system, Schoolol- Schoolol- Schoolology? Well, thanks, Steve, for putting that nice word in there for me.
This, there will be a few years, I think, trying to figure out if it's Schoology or Schoolology. It is Schoology. But we did have a pretty thorough process as we started reviewing the S I S to, to determine if our learning management system, we currently use Moodle, is going to be sufficient for us for next generation learning. We had an R F P out and from that, we whittled our, our candidates from eleven down to three. And then we did a pretty extensive pilot with parents, students and teachers. And after reviewing those, one system fell out at the review process. It was between Canvas and Schoology. And after the review, we really think that Schoology is going to serve us well as a foundational tool. One of the things we're super excited about is parents will actually be able to log in and see their child's email, child's homework and be able to actually see the work that's going on in the learning management system. That's one of the big things. It'll also help facilitate communication and it will allow us to do standards tracking and assessment within this learning management system. So we think that it's going to be a great foundational platform. Our plan is to migrate to this tool next fall and use the year as a transition year to, to sunset Moodle and spin up Schoology next year.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Would you clarify what you said about parents seeing homework? What was that?
Sure, so one of the common questions that we have when we use Moodle is sometimes parents don't see the assignments or the homework or they come home, they say, "Do you have any homework?" And they'll say, "It's in Moodle." And then the parents will go, "Can I see that? See what it is?" With Schoology, it actually has a parent-facing tool, so parents actually will be able to log on to it, see information, be able to communicate in a guarded or a walled garden environment, so they won't be able to actually do the homework for the students or see it, but they'll be able to access the information.
That's not just for any online type assignment, but it's any assignment that's given out, posted there for parents to be able to see. Is that what you're saying?
For content that's posted in the learning management system and this, they'll be able to see. Correct.
In the future, we aren't locked into the system. We could migrate on to another system?
That's correct. It's a three-year contract. And so, our plan is, is to migrate our Moodle content. So this vendor will help us migrate all the current Moodle content that we have into this new system. We'll keep copies of that, so we always can go back to the Moodle comp, content if we will. And then we'll be able to migrate the content out of this learning management into another system. It's not a trivial process, but it is a process that we can do.
Thanks, Steve.
So, are, are we getting rid of Moodle or just accessing Moodle through this?
No, we'll be sunsetting Moodle, so we'll be moving away from Moodle within a, next year will be our last year of using Moodle. We'll continue to use Google Apps for Education and those tools, but we will be sunsetting Moodle and moving to, this is our learning management system.
Any other questions?
Will this be closer linked to our current grading system or how is, is there some kind of integration that's going to happen?
Great question, Randy. Yes, and that is another feature that we're very excited about is, starting in the fall, it will automatically, what we call provision, and so, staff will automatically see their students in classes within this learning management system. And the information will be able to flow back from this into our grade books as well down the road. It is a feature that is tentatively scheduled for fall implementation. We don't know if it will be there, but it will be there by the end, by probably the end of semester one. So that we have the potential of a teacher being able to grade in one spot and a parent to be able to see that information in one spot. And it will also end up in the permanent grade book, if you will, as automatically. So it's going to help, I think, reduce some time and effort that our teachers have and our parents for finding information about where's the homework? What grade did they get on the homework and what's coming up in my child's kind of academic or instructional plan?
Thanks.
Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the approval of the 2016-17 school board meeting dates. Can I get a motion to approve those dates?
Second.
Rick, is this one yours?
Yeah, we just had a minor change from what the first reading was. Again, it falls in line that it's that, still looking at a Monday evening meetings, regular meetings, and then we make a few additional quarterly meetings, special works sessions that we have traditionally placed. We did make some changes with the January, moving the organizational meeting a week earlier and then delaying because we also delayed the week to get a better pacing on our January regular board meeting. But those are the only two changes and would recommend the board support the calendar as presented.
So are you representing, we're only going to have four work sessions next calendar?
That's what we schedule, Mr. Chair. That's what we schedule.
Checking. Any questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is scheduled policy review. Can I get a motion to approve revised policy seven fifteen?
Second.
Regina, any changes on this one?
There are no changes on seven fifteen since we saw it at our last meeting.
Any questions? Discussions? Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Any informational items?
I would just make the community aware that on Thursday this week, we have a couple of presentations to the League Women Voters. It's Thursday, April fourteenth. These are both occurring at the Senior It's Thursday, April 14th. These are both occurring at the senior center. One is at 10 o'clock, and one is at seven o'clock in the evening. Mr. Chair will be able to join me for the 10 o'clock meeting.
Correct.
But we are looking for a board member who could just join Susan Bratt and I for the evening meeting. So if you can check your schedules and let us know, they would like to have a board member present as well. We also are continuing to pursue other communication avenues as we move forward with our planning for the spring into the summer and next fall as well. But that would pretty much conclude my informational updates.
And I just want to note, as I've started to do the recognition of staff, there's accommodation of John Ford and recognition of the work that he's been doing. Is there anything else from a member of the board?
Just to remind the community that there's another, there was a GT meeting tonight, but there'll be a similar one again next week on Monday as well, right?
Correct. Correct. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.